Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Here.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
Will you please join me in standing for a moment of silence and the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll go into good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee this evening, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing, hearing none, we'll go to recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Chartwell's Summer Meals kickoff event is scheduled for Wednesday, July 16th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the World War II Memorial Park at the Splash Pad here in One Socket. And secondly, the No Cost Summer Meals program for childrens, for childrens, for children 18 years and younger will be held at the World War II Memorial Splash Pad Monday through Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. starting on July 7th and running through August 22nd. This will be the only meal site for the summer at our parks here in the city. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any questions, comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 14, 2025 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any correction, changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve and discuss, to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any member of the committee want to discuss any item? I do have, Mr. Perrier, on purchases, we have a lot of rehires. Did we find money? Is that, how did that work?
These were rehires for purchase services that were in the budget that you approved in April. Nothing, nothing new here personnel-wise. Just rehires for purchase services only, not personnel.
Okay.
You hired specialty.
I have nothing else, anyone?
Nope.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, may we have your report?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the committee. So you have a spreadsheet here with staffing changes. We have add, we have added, we have filled, I should say, a primary self-contained MLL position at Globe Park. This, just for the, for the committee's information, so this position was, was not a recall position. This, this was a position that needed to be filled at Globe Park based on the, on the numbers of primary self-contained at the school. So that is one position that, one employee that was hired. And the rest, there are a lot of hourly stipend extracurricular, which many of them are ESY, extended school year teams and teachers. And in addition, we have some, some parers who are also working with students in the ESY program across the district as well.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you, Chairman. So ESY teachers, do they meet with students or is this self-planning?
So they, so they do. So, so ESY is extended school year.
Right.
It's for, it's for students with IEPs. So there are teachers that work directly with them. And then there are also, and Ms. Morell can probably explain this better than I can. I'll, I'll hand it off to you in a, in a second. But there are also like social workers and psychologists that work this summer. They work, it's called team. And Dawn can, can explain that in much greater detail than, than I can.
Yep. So in order for us to stay in compliance, we have to have a summer evaluation team. So primarily, anything that has to be eligibility for special education has a 60-day timeline. So we need to make sure that we have staff available in order to meet those timelines. In the elementary and high school level, we don't have a lot of things right now going to summer evaluation team. Something, sometimes new students that move into the district, something comes up, so we'll have to meet. It's primarily for our pre-K population that clock continuously goes throughout the summer. So we have a lot of pre-K students that eligibility is, you know, coming up. So they have to do the eligibility, write their IEPs, and get everything started for their third birthday, wherever they may, that may fall.
I do have a follow-up.
Of course.
So, so, so last month, we hired quite a few academic, summer academic teachers, okay? And it also said pending enrollment. All right. Now, we're hiring three pages of teachers for ESY. Do we have the enrollment for all these teachers?
Yes. So at the student's annual IEP, we discuss whether or not a student qualifies for extended school year. And that's placed right in their IEP. So we have two pre-K classrooms at Pothier, a primary self-contained at Pothier, two SID classrooms at Globe, a medically fragile classroom at Globe, a primary self-contained at Globe, an intermediate self-contained at Globe. At the high school, I have a middle school classroom, an SID classroom that's at the high school, a medically fragile at the, at the high school, a transpro classroom, and an alt-assessment classroom. All of those students in those classrooms, we have confirmed, I think, two or three times if they are going to be attending. And as of today, I only had three students because the busing came in. So my secretary has been calling to confirm that where the busing stop is and that they're attending still. I've only had three students say they were not attending, and all of the classrooms are pretty much full.
Oh, wow. Okay. And final question?
Of course.
IDA, what funding is that?
IDEA.
What does it, what does it stand for?
Individuals with Disabilities Act. So that comes all out of that.
Is that federal money?
Yes. It's, it's the federal grant that we have for special education.
And we still have it?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we're going to school subcommittee reports, and we have one report this evening for the district-wide school committee climate subcommittee. I'll turn it over to Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Kepiscus.
All right. I'll handle it. The meeting called to order at 10:02 hours. All were informed. Dr. McGee was running a little late. He'd be arriving soon. Previous meeting minutes from 5:08.
Got bagged.
Previous meeting minutes from 5:08 were approved. It was discussed that going forward, that the union reps, Robin Murphy, Shaleen Goven, and Robert Stewart, and Barbara O'Zanian would represent two to three unions in future meetings when possible. Dr. McGee showed up around that time. So Dr. McGee updated the school board about the safety meetings he held with individual schools so they could voice any concerns. Among the issues for elementary schools was the process for out-of-district placement, internal concerns from staff, and staff issues. Better crosswalk markings, which were brought up to the city administration so they could work on that. There were discussions on different options for younger children with behavior issues, the need for locks on all doors. Some playgrounds are in disrepair and they need to be fixed. That will be addressed by the facilities department. The middle school meetings were, had issues with placement from fifth graders from elementary schools going into the sixth grade middle school. I guess there was a meeting prior of the administration individuals, but they were looking in to determine how and where the students will be placed relative to their needs. There's a mini-commissions at both the high school, at both the middle schools, and that's another issue that needs to be corrected. At the high school, building access issues were discussed and were, they were still ongoing, and we'll have future discussions on that. The board was reminded that professional development is offered for classroom management, but attendance is voluntary. So we can't mandate that for the teachers that were, who are in need. Alice training was discussed, and at the moment, the SROs are retraining in the course, and once they're done, they'll be conducting some training for us, for our support staff, and if possible, provide information to students. There were some budget issues that were brought up relative to behavioral issues where they wanted self-contained classrooms. When, I think you looked into it, the cost for one each school, elementary schools, would be about $1.3 million. Would be needed to add that to each elementary school. We do not have the money, obviously, so other alternatives have to come into play. The choice of BI's and power professionals or de-escalation rooms, which the district, which the district hopes to prioritize is the former over the latter. We'd much prefer to have the BI's over the, in the power professionals relative to the de-escalation rooms. It was mentioned to have a few rooms in different schools and transfer students to those schools with the rooms, but this is something that will not happen because of the welfare of the student. And it was quickly discussed that we may lose another $1700,000, although that's come, where that's come up with, but because of state budget that was passed by the general assembly this past week, and it's being studied furthered by us, by the WED. Now, we get the report back from the elementary schools, what they, some of their concerns were for that meeting. So the report back from the elementary school representatives, there was a small subcommittee that was formed, and it was regarding options of disruptive students at the elementary level who are in need to be removed for emotional and behavioral de-escalation purposes. There was an, there was an emphasis on a loss of instructional minutes for both students, whether the one causing the issue, the ones involved with the, not involved with the issue. But it was reported by Shaleen Goven that the meeting did not take place because of uncertainty with WED budget, but there were some informal discussions that were held. And all the options still needed to be on the table for elementary students, and that when a student is interrupted, that the de-escalation rooms in some form should be utilized. We'd like to, but again, could be a money issue, as long as there's no loss of instruction for all students involved. Dr. McGee made it clear if such rooms were used, all students' instructions will be made priority, a priority. Other options need to be considered because the cost factor of the rooms is prohibitive. Other avenues or adjustments to other methods will be looked at. Report back from the middle school reps for the coming year, they will continue to use pass and elevate programs, and the continued use of moving students between schools for behavioral issues. Some cameras are not working in some of the particular hallways in both schools, and those will be addressed. Again, Alice training was mentioned for fifth and sixth grade students who did not get the training, but like I said, the recertification is slowing that process. So when they start looking into doing that and taking care of that. From high school and WAC Tech, it seems like, for coming year, there seems like there's some still issues with unauthorized access, mostly between the buildings, but there are issues with general population access in the building. Currently, students sometimes leave rocks in the doors. And you combine that with a shortage of administrative, administration teachers, and some teachers aren't familiar with all the students, so that leaves some room for error. Tardiness also contributes. I guess the way, what's, what's the tardiness? Skyway? Skyward? Where do you enter the tardiness in?
Skyward, yeah.
Skyward. The way, I guess the way it's entered in Skyward leaves for some room for error. You can't account for all students properly, so we're going to look into that and try to streamline that so it takes care of some of the late issues. And I guess student parking is an issue. The, the, the Volk School, they'd like to see if we could return back to assigned parking relative to just leaving the parking spaces empty. That's something else to look into. Cell phones were addressed. Since the state passed a statewide ban in the schools, the WED has already banned in the, banned in our policies, but enforcement is an issue because of the cost of the phones. Some teachers are, there's a lack of wanting to be responsible for the phone. This was discussed a little further, I mean, we'll discuss a little further by the school committee and come up with something to hopefully address those issues. Our next meeting date is set for 9/9/25 at 4 o'clock here in room 124, and the meeting was adjourned at 11:06 hours.
Thank you. Mrs. Kepiscus, do you want to add to that?
No. The only other thing that we talked about, because I, it's something that has come up with me with my discussions with some staff about out-of-district placements. And I don't think people realize how expensive out-of-district placements were. And I did ask Ms. Morell, and she confirmed that an out-of-district placement could be anywhere between $60,000 and $100,000. And then you add on to that transportation, another $20,000 to $60,000 per student. And that's why the, the numbers are astronomical for those out-of-district placements. And we had a very, very brief discussion about would it be more cost-effective to create our own behavioral school? And we talked about the fact that we've had that before, and it didn't really work. So it had to be a lot of planning to go into it, and certainly wouldn't be something that would get off the ground this year.
No, no, you're right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment on the Skyward, the attendance issue. We had in our technology, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're going to be switching software for that to make sure it's a little bit more accurate, or Al's, am I right? Yes. Okay. I just wanted to follow up with that, but we are going to be switching software, I think, due to that inaccuracy problem, so we can be a little bit more accurate with the attendance records. And there's going to be a little bit more training for the principals as well, from what I believe Al said, I believe, but he's not here to correct me, but Kim's shaking her head, so I'm going to say I'm correct with that. So I just wanted to follow up with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It sounds like a lot of the issues that, and recommendations that have been proposed by the committee are going to be very limited by the budget, by the amount of money. And so a lot of that's going to have to be relooked at in terms of what can we implement and what can't we implement, at least as we go along for this next year.
Definitely.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on Ms. Kepiscus' comment, we easily spend over $10 million on out-of-district placements between the tuitions and the transportation a year, easily over $10 million.
Wow.
That's each year?
That is crazy.
Each year.
Jesus.
And to just talk about, like you said, a new school or a new building, where would we put them?
Well, see, that was my issue. I, I've been talking about
It's a good issue.
Behavioral schools for probably nigh on 15 years, through my entire chairmanship of the SELAC. And I, I had been recommending that we consider that simply because of the cost of the out-of-district placements before I was even on the school committee. And the real problem is, though, you have to have just the right staff. If you don't have just the right staff, all you're doing is moving all your problems to one building. But I did want to raise it again because with the closure of Globe, Burnin', and Coleman, my thought was that's probably the best chance we're ever going to have to have a building that we could dedicate either Coleman or Burnin' to become the behavioral school, because we would have two available buildings that we wouldn't have to construct. And that, that was my thought. And I had actually thought Coleman, because we're not talking about children who would be needing wheelchairs, crutches, those out-of-district replacements to like Meeting Street, those are not going to change. We wouldn't be taking those students back. I don't see us taking those students back. But I'm talking about strictly behavioral students. Those students coming back, I could see us potentially doing that, but as Ms. Morell said, her big concern was if you don't have the right staff, it's not going to work because we previously had that with the Feinstein Learning Academy. It didn't work.
Right. And those buildings, those two buildings, you know, the state told us you shouldn't be repairing them because of the excessive costs. So we'd be sinking money into a building that shouldn't be rehabbed, so that, that's the other issue, too.
And I understand that, but think of the money we're sinking into out-of-district placements each and every year. And I think you have to balance that and decide, is it worth making the investment in an already existing building? I don't know. The one other already existing building that I was thinking of is already gone. It's already been taken. RISE has taken OLV. The only other one that remains is Gattery. And Gattery was designed as a K through 3 building, so everything is intended for little kids. You can't have middle school kids using teeny-tongy toilets. It's just not going to work. I mean, it's just, just, I just thought it was an opportunity to discuss it, and I, I did, not to cause a problem, but just to
No, but I think it should be mentioned.
I think it's valid. I think it's very valid.
I think so, too.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of money that we're sinking in already, so it should be discussed.
I'm just saying shift that money from one place to another.
Yep.
And control the nature of what's going on.
Sure.
Because we have no control over those schools, no control over curriculum, no control over what they're using for behavioral.
Right.
Really don't.
That's true. Is that something that we'll be looking into, Dr. McGee, in terms of what, what Mrs. Kepiscus is talking about?
So I, I like to, oftentimes, I look at short-term and long-term.
Yep.
Short-term, I, I do want to look at, you know, as Mr. Leclerc was, was talking about, yeah, I'm not talking about a de-escalation room, but something potentially similar to what we had when Viola Barard was at Globe Park where there was a class. But again, everything is, is predicated on the funding, right?
Absolutely.
So, once we sort of, once, once the dust settles here this summer, and we find, you know, exactly where we are, and as we start to recall staff, if we have a savings, that's something that we could consider short-term. That's more long-term, where as, as you said, Mrs. Kepiscus, it isn't something that we could, you know, coordinate for next year. There, there would be a lot that would go into it. You know, could we look at one of the schools that, that's, that's closing? I suppose we've got a couple of years to, to think about it.
Right.
And, and if that's a viable option, and I'm not saying it is, and I'm not saying it isn't, but if it is a viable option, then that's something that we could look at, you know, we'd have a couple of, of years. But I agree that the only way that would work is if those positions were interview positions, and they should not be left to seniority because that's what happened in the past. And, and, and not, not the only thing. That wasn't the only reason. You know, there, there were things. It was sort of a, it was sort of a school that operated as a quasi-school. There wasn't an administrator that was there. It was an administrator that was, you know, that was serving in another building. So you'd have to have staff, including an administrator, there for, for it to work. So there's a lot to think about, but I think it's something that we certainly could think about.
Agreed. Since we've got the buildings anyway, so it's something.
Plus, you have to consider, a lot of people don't realize that when you have students in an out-of-district placement, that they're entitled to services under an IEP. We're bringing those services to those out-of-district placements. So that's an additional cost. You're taking SLPs, PTs, and OTs from our schools and sending them out to those, to service our students with IEPs in the out-of-district schools. So you have to consider that cost as well, because the caseload has to be adjusted accordingly. So I, I think that there's a lot of things, there's a lot of moving gears. Whether or not it would ever work, I don't know. Certainly wouldn't work in the near future, but I just wanted, because a lot of people and a lot of parents have said to me, well, why don't we get the difficult children out of school? And my response is always, well, how? Well, put them in a different school. Oh, so you don't want them in your son's school, but it's okay if they're at my son's school? That, that's not going to work either. And then you look at the, then they say out-of-district placements because they've heard that term. And my response is, you have no idea how much that costs. That's more than sending a child to Harvard for the year and having them all in Boston.
Yep.
You have no idea what the cost is for those out-of-district placements. And I just, I just don't know if it'd be feasible to shift that money back in, but if, if it's not going to work, we don't want to shift that money back here and then lose the spots we have now. Because as we all know, three of the out-of-district placements have closed in rapid succession over the last two or three years. So those placements are becoming, becoming more and more difficult to find.
Anything else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the district-wide school climate subcommittee report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Perrier, may I ask you for the financial update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Front of the school committee this evening is the April 2025 fiscal update, currently projecting a $11,000 surplus at the close of this fiscal year. Pretty much a break-even year we're looking at. On the, so financial highlights on the revenue side, due to higher-than-anticipated billings, Medicaid revenue is projected to be over budget by $1.744 million. On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are $943,000 under budget at this time, and when netted with the employee turnover allowance of $1.05 million, split overall salaries, $107,000 over budget. So we're pretty much on, right on the line, right on the number there with our, our salaries last year. Substitute salary line is $221,000 over budget at this time. We, we did have a little bit more than anticipated expense on the substitute salary line this year. So we're going to, we're going to bump that up at our next amendment, amendment time for fiscal year '26. Medical expenses are currently $582,000 over budget. We will continue to monitor this expense going forward. And as a reminder to the school committee, we do have approximately $1 million in OPEB funding, as well as $2 million on medical pooling account for potential medical over, overruns. All pensions are scheduled to come in over budget at this time, and this was a very late change in pension rate by legislation last year, which led to the unscheduled increase in expense. Overages and purchase services are due to us being unable to fill some budgeted salary positions, and these overages have been offset by savings on our salaries. Transportation was currently adjusted up in anticipation of additional buses coming from Ride to support district-wide transportation. We're looking at about $4 million in expenses paid for statewide this year, and that kind of folds back into the conversation we were having earlier. Many of those $4 million in expenses are for out-of-district transportation costs, not all of them, but the majority of them. Tuitions to private sources are over budget by approximately $864,000. This has come down a little bit, the projection, as we've gone closer to closing out the year. I think we've done a very good job of controlling the expenses to the best of our abilities here. And I'd like to congratulate and commendate Special Ed for doing the best they can with the expense line there. And finally, as I said earlier, we're looking at $11,000 surplus at this time. To kind of go into next fiscal year, fiscal year '26, as you all know, you did approve a budget back in April for fiscal year '26. We have received quite a bit of new information since you've approved that budget, the biggest being our federal funding that has come to fruition, as we kind of anticipated, but it's nice to see those numbers actually coming in. And also, the legislation has wrapped up its session, so we'll be taking a look at how that's going to impact our final funding from the state for fiscal year, fiscal year '26. And at the next school committee meeting in the middle of July, I plan on having a fiscal year '26 updated budget to present to the school committee. And that will be really our jumping-off point for next fiscal year. So, if the school committee has any questions, I'd love to answer them at this time.
These numbers are, are as of April 30th. And looking at the next two months, May and June, we don't have the reports here, obviously, but you're looking at the numbers. Is there a big jump in the medical or other purchase services that really could
It's, it's medical.
Act as budget significantly?
Medical. That's the big thing. And that's why I like to point out that we do have some maneuverability with our medical savings accounts that we have set aside. I wouldn't anticipate any more expenses at this point through June 30th. I think we've pretty much wrapped up our purchasing for this year. So my hope is we now move on to the part of the year where we actually get to close out some POs and maybe recover some of the money that we have encumbered at this time. The next, that's the summer job. As we kind of get through July and August, our, my staff will work through those open purchase orders and figure out if, A, we need to close them out, if we need to roll them in the next year, figure out what we need to do with them. But I'm hopeful that, for the most part, everything other than medical is pretty set in stone here. But we'll keep an eye on medical as we continue to close out the last two months. And if we need to maybe make a transfer in from one of our accounts to cover any potential overages, we will certainly bring that to the school committee's attention. I will bring that to the school committee's attention, and I'll come up with a plan on how we're going to balance things out as we close this fiscal year.
Thank you. And I wouldn't expect any more revenues, right? That should be dead in the water at this point.
Well, again, the Medicaid still might, there's still some Medicaid trickling in. So we do have some options. We may have some Medicaid coming in in July that we can accrue back if it is indeed FY '25 revenue. I like to kind of weigh it out and see really where we need it.
Exactly.
If it's needed, then we can certainly pull it back. And if it's not, we'll leave it
A contingency will be sitting
We'll, we'll start next year with a little bit more in the bank, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense. Any comments, questions for Mr. Perry?
Chairman. Brad, did you get a chance to look into the 14% cap clawback that the General General just passed?
From what I understand so far, well, I learned a few things today. I learned that there wasn't a cap at all in law, that the 7% was set. Yeah, well, the 7% was set by RIDE. And I guess they had, they could set it at whatever they wanted. So I think I learned a little, something about that today. So it appeared we had something, but then it reverted back to what it originally was. So I think right now, again, I'm going to be investigating it over the next couple of weeks because, again, everything just got finalized. But it's looking like I'm going to need to put in another $750,000 to cover RISE prep tuitions going in the next fiscal year, above and beyond what we had budgeted. So you may have noticed that we did get some additional funding from the state, I think to the tune of about half a million dollars. That's what the latest bump was. But all of that's going to be heading right to that tuition line. And that's what the first thing that I'm going to need to do as we kind of get into the budget amendment.
Preliminary, it looks like it's going to cost us $750,000.
Prelimarily, it looks like, as it stands right now, and as I look at it right now, I'm looking at a $750,000 increase to tuitions.
And you're aware the State, House, and Senate Finance, I know you probably are, said it's going to cost us nothing.
Well, it's going to cost us, based on what I have, again, I don't want to comment too quickly. I am not familiar 100% with everything that's gone through the budget and what's happened this last week and what's gone into last week. But I imagine some of it will start coming out as I dive into it and as I connect with the Department of Education. There may be an update to the tuitions that we have. I'm only basing it on the information that I have in front of me right now.
Understood.
That's contrary to everything that I heard, Laura, in discussing this, the amendment to the House budget. That would be, it would be an impact, but not for this fiscal year, but for the following fiscal year.
That, that may be true, and we may be talking apples and oranges a little bit. I think the, what you're talking about is a little bit different than what I'm talking about. I'm, we're not getting that additional clawback going into next year. That's based on UCOA data. And that additional clawback saved us quite a bit of money in this fiscal year. Based on the UCOA data, WNSAC does not qualify for that additional clawback. So we're going from about $750 a student a year to $2,000 a student a year. And that's what's, that's what's leading to the increase, is that loss of that secondary clawback. And again, that's based on the information. It's posted on RISE's website right now. But they may have some work to do updating what's on there based on what happened in the legislative session, so.
Yeah, is RISE, is RIDE updated?
I haven't seen.
They changed the website.
Haven't seen an update to, I have not seen an update to it yet. Doesn't mean it's not in progress. Don't want to speak for anybody there. But like I said, I can only go and plan based on the information I have in front of me, and that is the information that I have in front of me right now. $750,000 in additional expense. Again, I think you're talking about something else. That additional 7% clawback, or that additional 7% next year, that's really going to drive things up. We did lose that secondary clawback this year, and it doesn't appear that that's coming back. So that's still going to be a $750,000 expense, so.
All the fighting we did at RIDE for funding for them, got a backdoor by the governor.
Any other comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a financial update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Morrell, would you give us your special education update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just correct one thing I said earlier. When you asked what IDEA was, I said it really quickly. It's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. I missed the education part, and I thought about it after, so I just want to make sure I cleared that up. So in front of you, I have my special education end-of-year numbers that I get from the Department of Education when I have to rewrite my grant for special education. I just pulled out some of the indicators that we get graded on or looked at upon. So right now, our graduation rate for students with disabilities is at 82%. It is an increase from last year. Last year it was 80.56%. And the state average right now is 87%. So we still have a little ways to work with that, but we're not too far away. Our dropout rate for students with disabilities is at 9%. The last time I reported, last year, it was at 11.11%. So we're doing better there. The state right now is at 4%. There's a survey that families take throughout the school year through SurveyWorks. And if you have a student with an IEP, you're supposed to denote that, and there's certain questions that parents have to answer. On the family satisfaction survey, we had 76% of families that responded favorably to our special education within the city, compared to the state average of 73% that responded favorably throughout the state. For post-secondary outcomes, when students graduate, the year after they graduate, our staff has to reach out to them to see what they're doing, if they are participating in college, in work readiness, if they're just staying home and not doing anything. We have to see where our graduates are, what they're doing, our graduates with IEPs. Our response rate was at 75%. It exceeded the state average of 69%. So out of all of our students with IEPs that graduated the year prior, we were able to make contact with 75% of them and get information. When it comes to preschool, below is the percentage of preschool students who entered our preschool program. And they were below expectations and the growth that they've made before they aged out to go into kindergarten or when they completed their IEP, meaning they've, they didn't need the services any longer. So there's three different areas that they take a look at. One is positive social-emotional skills, accusation and use of knowledge and skills. It's their communication and the use of appropriate behaviors to meet needs. So this, now, this is the growth that they've made from when they started the program until they aged out, substantial growth. The state average is 69% of all pre-K students made progress there. Our district also made 69% in the same area. As far as the accusation and use of knowledge and skill, the state average is at 45%. Our district is at 66%. So we did better than the state in that area. And the use of appropriate behaviors to meet needs, the state average was 67%. Our district average was 74%. So our students are making a lot of good growth throughout that area. When it takes a look at child find, our child outreach screenings, we're supposed to screen every three-year-old, four-year-old, and five-year-old before they enter kindergarten. When you take a look at it, our K to 3, we're only at 10% as a district that we hit that population of students. Our state average is 14%. So as a whole, the state kind of has a hard time reaching that population as well. Our K to 2, so our students that are two years from kindergarten, we're at 28%. The state average is 41%. We do the best in the K to 1. Our district average is 65% there, and the state average is 55%. This is, child outreach screenings are optional for parents. We're supposed to, as a school district, screen all of our students, but it's optional if the parent wants to bring them. So we're kind of, we reach out and we try our best to bring them in. We do best with the K to 1 because once the students register for kindergarten, we reach out to the students and the parents right away to have them screened before they come into K. So that helps out a little bit there. And the overall screening rate, like I was saying, we need to work a little bit on the K 3 and the K 2. The state average is 37%, our district's at 32%. We're not super far behind the state, but there's a lot of room for improvement. And then below is my normal snapshot and the numbers that I report out. So at the end of this school year, these numbers as of June 20th, we had a total number of 1,469 students receiving special ed services within our programs, pre-K to 12 and trans-pro. This represents 27.9% of our population of 5,226 students. This grew a little bit, but it makes sense as the year goes on, new students are being found eligible. We have 19 students in the trans-pro classroom at the end of this school year. We have 114 students in our out-of-district placements. One of them did not have an IEP, so we had 113 of them with IEPs. And we have 194 students in our private schools and pre-K programs throughout the city that we provide support for. Do you have any questions or comments on that?
Any comments or questions?
Quickly, you mentioned, ding 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 ding, 27.9% relative to pre-K through 12. On your little chart, you have 30%. Is that relative, is that because of the out-of-district placements and, okay?
Yes.
And private schools and all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have one item in new business, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve CILAC's Special Educational Local Advisory Council 2024-2025 Annual Report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa. Mrs. Kapiskas, would you give us that report?
I gave it to you in written form.
Yes.
Everybody on the school committee received a link to the actual document. It includes our agendas for every meeting, our minutes, to the extent that I have them, where there weren't minutes, my notes from the meeting, and our schedule of meetings for this past year and our schedule of meetings for next year, as well as a summary. The real takeaway from it is participation is worsening, absolutely worsening. We had several meetings this year at which, we had far more meetings this year at which there were no parents than the meetings at which there were parents. And the meetings at which there were parents, there were never more than three parents. Consider, we have 1,500 kids in district with IEPs. We should have 1,500 people at every one of those CILAC meetings, and we don't. We never had 1,500. We never had more than 20 on a good night.
Right.
But now we're having none. And that's a big reason why we don't have presentations anymore, because quite frankly, I'm not going to ask Ripon to come in and present and be embarrassed when I have no parents there. Because they're presented, most of the people at our meetings are administrators. Dr. McGee, Ms. Morrell, they're the ones that are at our meetings. They're going to answer questions. We've been carrying one agenda item for three months, which was how children get referred for behavioral evaluations in our schools. And there's been no parents at the meeting to present it to, so it just keeps getting carried. And now it's carried to our September agenda in hopes that people will be coming because that seems to be a hot-button issue for people. People talk about it at school meetings. We have staff talking about it here at school committee meetings. And we thought that was an excellent opportunity to present what the principal would know. It doesn't happen like that. But no one shows up. And it's disappointing. It's very disappointing. So the chair, our next meeting is scheduled for September 4th, 2025, 6:00 p.m. At this point, it will be virtual for the same reason, not going to have to drag themselves over here for an actual meeting. We tried everything. When we were doing live meetings, we were providing food. We've tried everything. I don't know what else to do anymore. I think a virtual meeting is the most accessible we could possibly do. If it's a cell phone, it can join, you know, and who doesn't have a cell phone today? As we can tell from our cell phone issues. So that's basically the report. The bottom line is, there is a bunch of people that are, you should.
You're not going to read that?
No, she's not.
I'm not.
Is your mom coming? Ms. Morrell, I've got, I've got a question for you. Knowing that we don't have the attendance, you meet all the time. Is there a reason why they're not attending CILAC or to get admission? Is there something that we're going to give the parents that you come across during the year so that they do attend, which would get to them?
So at every IEP meeting, my LEAs, those are the staff members that run the meetings, they give information to parents as to the dates, the times, when CILAC is, what CILAC is. I know Dr. McGee puts it out through his news blast each week right before the meeting happens. I don't know if families, I don't know if they don't understand what it is, if they're confused, if they're nervous of showing up. I'm not sure. We get it out there. We tell everybody about it. I don't, I don't know. Usually if there's.
Can you ask?
If there's usually an issue, I can, we can start asking on families as they. Usually if there's an issue with special ed, that's when the numbers tend to get higher. Our special ed is not perfect, and I know there's issues every year. We'll have to tweak and make better. I'm sure there's something that the parents would have a concern about or would want to know about. So we can put a survey out there to families and see if they'll, you know, if they would attend, why they're not, get some ideas from families.
Because I would think. Attend these meetings because there could be a lot of information, especially if you have parents that attend, you'd have speakers. It's an opportunity to share issues. And it's a perfect, especially since we're not requiring them to come to school. Like Mrs. Kapiskas said, you know, a virtual meeting is ideal. Because you use your phone, your iPad, your computer, and no one showing up. It sounds like, I can't believe that. So that's who's up. Why, I think something we need to find out.
What I can do is I can create a survey and share it with Mrs. Kapiskas to see if there's any questions that you want me to ask them or reword or whatever. And then I get all the families and see if we'll get responses.
It's like, why? You don't find the need or you don't think it's important. Once they would attend, they would find, they can ask the questions. It's a great opportunity to share information.
Yep, absolutely.
If I may be blunt, I'm going to ask a question first, though. What is parental attendance like at IEP meetings?
50/50. Many times.
But 50/50 is better than zero.
Many times families have us proceed without them and send it home. Sometimes they are at work and they're not, you take time out to come in personally through Google Meet or through a telephone conversation. However, I do ask parents that if they're at the supermarket or if they're not in a location where they can discuss their students and their students' need, that we reschedule the meeting. I have had parents at the checkout line on the phone with the meeting, and it's hard to have a meeting that way.
To me, that speaks volumes.
Right.
About what the real issue is, is, and a lot of it's parental apathy. I think a lot of special ed parents, they just deliver their children to school and expect us to figure it out. And that's not fair. Wasn't fair when my son was in special ed. I mean, I had things to contribute to. This is what goes on at home. When he does X, we do Y. And you need that communication to have consistency. Because without consistency, you're not going to see improvement. That's the bottom line. But if I can be perfectly blunt, I think what has replaced CILAC is social media. People would rather get on social media and complain about what the issues are than come to a meeting and get it solved. And that's very frustrating. To me, it's very frustrating that if you think the school department is monitoring social media, they're not. And for many years, I fought with Mr. Norteriani about allowing the CILAC to have a Facebook page. And now I'm glad I could listen to him from all those years and said, he said to me, "You keep, had to monitor the comments 20." years, and said, he said to me, you keep had to monitor the comments 24/7, because we 100% would have parents on our Facebook page complaining about Mrs. Smith, and Mrs. Jones, and Mr. McGill, whatever you want. And you can't do that. That's, that's the issue. But that's what they want to do, on their own Facebook pages. And I always say to them, why are you doing this? Why don't you show up at a meeting and talk about it? We can solve the problem. If you're not, we can talk about that. But being blunt, I think that's a big part of the problem. They don't care to solve it. They'd rather go on social media.
I think we try to reach out, and maybe address the issues that Mrs. Kapiskas has raised tonight. Because frankly, it's a, it's a great service to provide. If they're using their cell phones and discussing this amongst themselves, well, they're not getting the real answers. And they're going away. And maybe there's so much apathy, nobody cares.
And CILAC's mandated by state law. We have to have it. If you don't have it, there's certain remediation. So, which is why I'm still here, even though my son is long out of the school department. He's 24. So he's not in the school department anymore, but no one else stepped up to take over. And I don't want to put the district in a position where there is no CILAC. I worked too hard to keep it going this long.
Right. Westshire Burke, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say too, how's participation at our school committee meetings? Coming at CILAC, but it's the same reason. You know, I mean, we can't, I mean, we offer a great, a great meeting here, but we can't, we can't, we can't bring them in. I mean, it's true. I don't know. I mean, this, I think it goes beyond just, you know, all these, you know, all these other meetings. People, I don't know, they're busier, or they're on social media, or, I don't know.
They're on social media about our school committee meetings, that's for sure. I don't know if you are, but I, I get, I get it shared with me. Because I have a 24-year-old and a 28-year-old, so I hear all about the comments.
Nope. We get the comments. We get the comments.
Go crazy.
Any, anything else? Back to me, your rule call.
Chairman Borchet?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
And all of you come to our meeting on September 4 remote, I will provide a link to everyone.
Wonderful. I want to make this a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:52. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.